Just a couple of points of interest. If you use restroom, it's outdoors to the right, to the outdoors to the right. There's a microphone in the ceiling. Videos are this meeting's being recorded on video. That is a hot mic. So if you're having discussions amongst yourselves and you can watch them on YouTube later and hear yourself making some backside comments on something, it's going to be picked up. So just be aware of that. Public comment, we'll try to keep three minutes. Hopefully you have some representation in groups about any concerns that you have. We appreciate you being here and learning about this project even more than you have already. So thank you for being here and taking some time out of your day.
All right, we'll call the meeting into order for Wednesday, June 28th, 2023, Planning Commission Meeting at 7:00 PM. And start off with the roll call.
Steve Haken in Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Wenslow, Trowbridge Park, Norwood Street.
Eric Power, Staff Planner.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Roger Zappa, Township Attorney.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. On favor.
Aye.
Post. Aye. Minutes from the previous meeting of June 14th, 2023.
Motion to approve the minutes of previous meeting.
Any discussion? On favor.
Aye.
Post. Public comment. If anyone would like to speak before the agenda items, you're welcome to do so now for up to three minutes. Otherwise, you can wait till the agenda items or the public hearings. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to six. A, new business. Public hearing number 062823-1. Public hearing and review of a proposed mixed residential preliminary planned unit development on a property located within the Scenic Residential zoning district. The parcel tax ID is 520800800400. Applicant is the Longyear Realty Corporation, 210 North Front Street in Marquette. Mr. McCarthy.
All right, here we go. So this project was brought to us by the Longyear Realty Corporation, but there are other entities involved, including the Kamenon Trail Network and their partners, Tri Media, UP Engineers and Architects, and probably several others. So these things don't happen, just one entity coming together with an idea. It's a group, a team effort to put these projects together. And I'm going to go through this process because I want to educate the public that's here on what a planned unit development is. Some of you might not know that. Some of you might be bored to death with zoning, and unfortunately, I'm going to bore you some more. So a planned unit development, and this is a part of our zoning ordinance. Regulations are intended to provide various types of land uses planned in a manner which shall encourage the use of land in accordance with its character, adaptability, encourage innovation in land use planning, achieve economy and efficiency in the use of land, natural resources, energy, and provision of public services, utilities, encourage useful open space, protect natural features, and sensitive environmental areas, provide enhanced housing, employment, shopping, traffic circulation, and recreational opportunities for the town, people of the township, and bring about a greater compatibility of design and use, and also provide enhanced site and building architectural features. So that's the intent of what a planned unit development is. And really what it is, is a tool that we have as planners or as developers to bend the ordinance a little bit, if you will, if the Planning Commission and the public, through a public hearing process, deem all of those things are true. I'm going to give you a little bit of history here, too, because this project didn't just come about. It was actually initiated to staff as a concept in the beginning of 2022. So Planning and Zoning Department staff, our Township Manager, and a couple of other staff members met with representatives from Longyear back in 2022 to go over plan concepts and to share information and ideas relevant to the proposed development. On September 28th, 2022, and per the ordinance in this process, and prior to the submission of their preliminary PUD plan application, the applicant presented their concepts to the Planning Commission. No, some of you were here, I think many of you were here, and there were no decisions made at that time. The purpose was for exchanging information, providing guidance to the applicant, and determining the eligibility of the request for consideration as a PUD. On Wednesday, April 5th of this year, we received the preliminary PUD application, and that requires a long list of things, sort of a site plan, really, although a site plan was included along with traffic studies and other requirements. And then upon receipt of that, myself as a zoning administrator forwarded that to a number of regulatory agencies. Road Commission, Drain Commissioner, School District, Eric can pull that up. Marquette County Soil Erosion Control Official, Marquette Department of Transit, or Michigan Department of Transportation, Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, the School District Superintendent of Schools, the Fire Chief of Marquette Township, the Chief of Local Law Enforcement, so the Sheriff's Department, all of the affected, potentially affected utility companies, railroads, Public Works Department, and then any others that we deem necessary. So upon receipt, there's a period of 15 days that those entities had a chance to review the proposed project, and all of those comments were collected, and along with some of my own and staff's own, not just mine, were sent back to the applicant prior to this public hearing. So tonight, we scheduled, well, let me back up. At the last meeting in June, on June 14th of this year, so two weeks ago, we provided all of that information along with full-size sets of plans and the narrative and traffic study information here to the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ahead of time. We wanted to make sure that we got that information to them in a timely manner so they had time to digest it. So that brings us to where we are today, and that is section 1305 of the preliminary PUD plan application process, where a Planning Commission has a public hearing and reviews the preliminary PUD. I have published this and sent out notice to those neighbors within 300 feet of the property, and there was an article, classified article, put in the newspaper, and we have an affidavit for that. So tonight, following the public hearing, the Planning Commission shall review the preliminary PUD for conformance with the standards set in 1307, there are a list of them, and make its findings according to those standards and shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny the PUD application. An approval with conditions shall not be considered final until the applicant submits a written acceptance of the conditions and all necessary revisions to the preliminary PUD plan to the Planning Commission. So hypothetically, if it were approved tonight, the preliminary PUD, there's a final PUD that needs to be submitted. So each time we've met, you know, when you were here the first time, we reviewed the concept. Now they've dug a little deeper and they've provided more information. If the PUD, the preliminary PUD plan is approved, then the final PUD will be submitted and even more information will be provided. Depths of utilities, things of that nature, cross-sections of roads, although a lot of that has been provided. So let's get into the nitty-gritty. I think everybody knows where the project location is. This is a zoom out, just so you can see, kind of, you know, based within the area, the greater Marquette area, you can see where this item locates. Those green shaded properties are either within the Commercial Forest Act or were. I don't know how outdated that map is. And then this is just a zoom in of that area. The zoning is Scenic Residential. This was requested by Longyear several years ago when they had logged the property out enough to where they wanted to do something else with it. We had a conversation with Mr. Farrell from their office and said that they proposed to develop some residential homes. And so this was the zoning district that was requested. Prior to that, it was Resource Production or one of the mineral extraction type zoning districts that we have in the community. You can see Rural Residential to the south, which is here on Woods, and then Scenic Residential wraps all the way around the basin. And even though it's Scenic Residential, there are a number of sites through the condominium process that are smaller than the required five-acre piece. And that's, again, what a planned unit development or a site condominium process can do through This is just the equalization parcel area. Obviously, their boundary doesn't go to the north side of the basin. So this is their PUD application submittal. They were required to submit a number of things, including a narrative, which was provided. There was a lot of information provided. What I'm going to do tonight is kind of surmise the highlights of that and really the requirements. We found the application to be complete, per the zoning ordinance, for this time in the process. We received a question tonight on stormwater. Stormwater would be much more detailed at some point in the future, should this move forward. So this is their cover sheet. This is the overall project plan. So this is 163 acres, with some of the property being located in the city. Both the Township and the City of Marquette have executed an Act 425 agreement, which effectively transfers the property from the city into the Township for zoning review purposes and taxation. We will give back the city's portion if it's approved, but effectively through zoning, they're allowing us to conduct zoning on the property. So this is Phase One, which consists of a mix of single-family residential. Phase Two is another phase of, it's all residential, but just different flavors. And then Phase Three. One point I'll touch on now, and I'll also touch on it again later, is that the proposal is to obviously approve the plan in phases. And Phases One, or I'm sorry, Phase One, which you just, or Phase One, A, Two, and Three, so there's three phases within this Phase One, would not be fully complete until 2027. So the first year, they're proposing to deliver 15 units. 2025, they're proposing to deliver 17 units, and in 2026, they're proposing to deliver Additional site features, I don't think this laser pointer doesn't work on the, excuse me, the slide screen for some reason. Obviously, this property is located in, within some of the best recreational areas and assets that we have. So this was just to demonstrate the integration of the project with the NTN Trail Network by creating their own trails, their own pump tracks, and learning the playing areas. These are some of the lighting and signage concepts that have been proposed. This is kind of a general overview of the site itself. The different colors represent the different phases. So this is a proposed utility plan. This is the intersection of Wright Street and Forestville Road. They'll be running sewer all the way to their project. Water currently terminates or would begin at here on Woods Road. Thanks to Mr. Swadley's development. This is a proposed utility plan. So again, there's a lot of things in this phase of the project that are proposed and then would be formalized later on. The stormwater plan, obviously, there's a lot more detail on the full-size set of sheets. It's really difficult to review this, but just know that we have reviewed these proposed plans. So this gets back to the phases that they're looking at, you know. It's a lot to look at if you're thinking about 240 units on 163 acres, but it's not going to all happen at the same time. In fact, you know, this, you know, this Phase One is actually pretty aggressive, in my, in my opinion. So this here shows the current zoning district and the minimum requirements, the urban residential district, and I'll get into why that's important in a minute, and then the planned unit development proposal. So for instance, the minimum lot size at Scenic Residential is five acres. The minimum lot size in urban residential serviced by water and sewer is 8,000 square feet. And the proposed smallest denomination of land is 10,300, well, you said 10,300, but we'll call it 10,400. Minimum lot width, setbacks, and minimum finished first-floor area. So the proposed lot sizes range in, from 10,300 square feet to 20,000, oh, that's wrong, 20,000 square feet, my bad. And the proposed home size ranges are from 1,500 square feet to 3,000 square feet. There's been a lot of discussion about density. Lot sizes from the zoning ordinance allow for the, for a denser neighborhood design, but does not allow density beyond that at the urban residential district, which is 10.89 dwelling units per acre for multifamily, and more relative to this project, 5.45 dwelling units per acre for single-family dwellings. At the maximum number of 240 homes, the dwelling units per acre for the Forestville community would be, for the entire 163 acres, would be 1.472 dwelling units per acre. And even if you were to cut the property in half and only utilize the developable portion of the property, or 81.5 acres, the dwelling units would only be 2.944. So this is the relation that we have to look at from a zoning standpoint, is that this number is less than what the minimum dwelling units are allowed. So by ordinance, they meet the density requirements. So along with that, staff recommends approval of the review standards found in 1307 and approval of the proposed preliminary PUD project contingent upon the following items. So the Road Commission, initially, Mr. Iwaniki, before his departure, gave a number of 200 units with a strong look at the development after 150 units were developed. More recently, and after the resubmital of a, an updated transportation plan, the Road Commission kind of pulled that back to saying, well, we should really take a look at that after 100 units, or, you know, no more than 100 units, or reanalyzing for the legalese here that we should take a look at that. I, you know, the Plan Commission could put whatever conditions they want on it. These are suggestions from staff, okay? So, "For the Marquette Township Road Commission's recommendation, no more than 100 dwelling units shall be constructed prior to a significant improvement to the Forestville Commerce Drive, County Road 492 intersection, and/or an alternative ingress/egress to the PUD development is created. Number two, all conditions listed in the Marquette County Road Commission from their review letter dated April 26, 2023 shall be met." Obviously, a final PUD plan would be submitted in a, by the applicant. And as this is a public hearing, the developer shall comply with any conditions that the Planning Commission deems necessary after hearing comments from property owners located within the required notification area. I would add to that, number five, which would be that the planned unit development complies with all other requirements of the Marquette Township zoning ordinance. But this is a public hearing. Those are staff's recommendations based on what was submitted. I'm sure the applicant can add some more detail to their proposal. Our review is based on a zoning, strictly a black-and-white zoning review. There's obviously a housing shortage in the area. There were comments on price points, things of that nature, which are outside of our purview as planning commissioners. You can't tell people, yeah, you can build a restaurant there, but it can't be that nice for us. Okay? What I do believe what will happen, if it is approved and it moves forward, that it'll shake up the housing market quite a bit, because you'll have people that are able to move into these homes, which will then, you know, vacate other homes in the area to allow people to, you know, right-size their home for them. I will also say, finally, that we have been, and I mean we, but the Township Board as well, desperately trying to find funding for the intersection. Thus far, we've been unsuccessful, but I am confident that if this moves forward, either through a private-public partnership or through working with our partners at the Road Commission, that this intersection issue will be solved, and/or a secondary egress and ingress would be constructed into the property. We understand, you know, I like to say, I try to understand the concerns of our residents. We've heard this for a while. It's, project's not new to us. And I'm actually excited for tonight, because we're finally at a point where we can move this off-center one way or another and, and hopefully do some quality, sustainable, equitable development for our community, which is desperately needed. Lastly, the intersection that has been restripped as of, I don't know if it was a couple of years ago, okay? Although not perfect, looking at crash data there, it is improved. So that's helpful. It's not the perfect fix, and we, you know, as planners, we try to say, a good plan now is better than a better plan later, but that one will stick with us and we will, I promise you, we'll continue to work on that intersection, not just for the Forestville development, but I think the recreational opportunities, NTN has a lot of activities and things going on up that way, too. And I think that area is going to be our next growth area for the next 10 to 20 years. You know, prior to that, we thought maybe south along 492, south of US 41 would be, but we should have known that the recreational assets that are up there would be the attractive area for people to develop their homes. So fortunately, we have water within proximity and a lot of recreational assets in the area for people to enjoy, and the developer's putting in utilities. So that's a major component to any development, and a costly one at that. So with that, I would ask if Planning Commission has any questions of me. Otherwise, feel free to conduct your public hearing.
Any questions right now for Jason, for anyone?
No questions for me.
Okay. So would the applicants have anything they'd like to add further?
Um, I don't think so.
Come up here and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Arwood, 210 North Front, Longyear Building. Nothing to add beyond what Jason explained. Thank you, Jason, that was a great presentation. I would just say that the focus and the purpose of the Forestville neighborhood has really been to provide a really wide demographic of people with new homes to live in in the area. So there was a big focus on designing for all aspects of life, people who are maybe in the 65 and plus community who are really needing homes right now to move into. Again, talking about loosening up that housing stock a little bit. And then down to something like a townhome that would, could work really well for a growing family or somebody starting out. So the goal of the Forestville neighborhood was that we created a product that had a really wide demographic that it met. So you'll see that reflected in the design, and then again, in how we approach the site design as well, making it a little bit more compact, but also efficient with utilities and land use and all of those things.
Any questions from any of the commissioners right now? No? Okay, thank you. Jason's writing, uh, written that you wanted to read into the minutes?
Yes, I received one piece of correspondence from Mr. Cliff Stammer, 200 Hereon Woods, Dear McCarthy Park, Dear Marquette Township Planner and Zoning Administrator. Firstly, I would like to commend the Township for its commitment to thoughtful development that respects and enhances the existing environment. The integration of residential neighborhoods should be undertaken with careful consideration to ensure that new structures harmonize with the natural elements, preserving the unique character of our woods and the outdoor ambiance that makes our community so special. Given the significance of the surrounding woods and the importance of maintaining a cohesive aesthetic, I kindly request that the Township pays close attention to the architectural design of the proposed residential structures by selecting an architectural style that complements and blends seamlessly with the natural environment. We can create a cohesive, visually appealing neighborhood that residents can take pride in. Once again, thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Clifford F. Stammer, 200 Hereon Woods Drive.
Anything else?
That's it.
Right. Then we can open the public hearing right now at 7:26. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward and state your name and address in about three
My name is Dr. Cynthia Wiggins, and I live on 150 Hereon Woods Drive, and my practice is right around the corner from here. I have four questions that I would like to have answered in one form or another. One, on the images that you have over there, you're showing the lighting, our neighborhood. We all have our own conservative versions of light, so what is the ambient light going to be doing to our neighborhood? Also, will the development be on the city water supply or on the well system? And if so, on the well system, how are they going to support the water pressure? Because we're already short as it is. On the description of the dwelling units per acre, or per acre, are you talking about a building, or are you talking about each townhouse, townhome within the building being considered a dwelling unit? And the fourth question is, where are you going to put the alternative ingress? Because there's no way they're going to handle that much off of that road. And all four of those are issues that we're already dealing with, with my practice and our neighborhood in and of itself. I think every house, almost, has had somebody hit coming in and out of Forestville. I've had patients hit with traffic coming in and out of Cedarville. So ingress and egress is something that has really, 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 really got to be looked at for traffic flow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. How you guys doing tonight? Dan Wiggins, 150 Hereon Woods Drive. I have some of the same questions my wife has. I don't know if it's actual or if it's just a feeling, but water pressure's a big issue for me. I can tell you that when we first moved in, before the rest of the development was done, that Lynn did over here, I think we were at 92 PSI at the tap outside. And right now, I know it's way less than that. And the reason I know that is because the sprinklers don't run the way they used to run. They, they basically dribble anymore. And I don't know if that was from changing from the city water supply to the well systems you guys put in. you guys put in, but it's definitely different than it was. And if you're going to add that many new residents down there, run the water pressure down there, my question is, is there step-up pumps coming? What are you guys doing for it? Because we're losing water pressure and it isn't nice. Secondly, you kind of addressed the ingress and egress. That worries me. I mean, 200, if you put 100 people in there, 100 homes in phase one, that's 200 new cars coming out. Now, one of the beauties about living up here, and you guys all know this, right? Our rush hour lasts 15 minutes. But you're talking about 200 new cars in 15 minutes. Now, maybe only half those people go to work, but it's still 100 cars in 15 minutes at that point. So I hope you'll consider that because she's correct. Everybody in the neighborhood has had an accident at that corner or we know somebody that's had an accident and almost died. So it's a bad corner. If you guys don't live there, you don't get it. The hardest in and out on that corner is coming straight across from Commerce and going onto Forestville or coming off of Forestville and going onto Commerce. I know that the speed limit says 40 and I know that they put a sheriff there and he parks there, but I'm going to tell you right now, people are coming around there at 70 and there's no doubt about it in my mind. So something's got to happen with that. I applaud you guys for the sewer system. I hope it does come down there. That's wonderful. I think that the development is widely needed in Marquette County. We obviously are in the crunch for homes here. But those are my considerations, my concerns that I'm worried about and I hope you'll
Good evening. My name is Bob DeSettle. We live at 120 Hereon Woods Drive. We've lived there for 23 years and I'm not, I have an open mind for what your plans are as far as building this property and everything and developing it, all for them. But just what you've heard from them too, we have some serious issues. Cannot wait, the county cannot and the township cannot wait for 100 units to be built to determine what you're going to do with that road. That road is a nightmare. I mean, it's only gotten worse since we moved there. I mean, the traffic because of the trails and the tourists that go down to the basin and everything has grown in tenfold. And it was never an issue when we first moved there, but it's needed to be addressed before the development is made.
Hi. Susan Spalding, 285 Forestville Basin Trail. I guess I have two concerns. Forestville Basin, we all know about the Forestville and Wright Street, but the Forestville Basin Road is not in very good condition now. Anytime there's a storm, there's a lot of drainage issues. And so I'm just wondering if Longyear is going to do anything to maintain the road or improve the road? I saw the number one, is it prior to, that they're going to strengthen the quality of the road? And then are they going to clean it up after or during their phases to maintain that? And then another question concern I have is, that is an old dam there and hopefully it can withstand everything, but there's going to be a lot of movement with the earth. And if there is any damage staying to the dam by all this construction, will they take responsibility for repairing that?
Hello. Christina Ordichelli, 275 Forestville Basin Trail. I just wanted to bring it up that I want special attention, please, to be taken to the light pollution that would be coming off the back of these properties going out towards the lake, the basin. It just want to, I know they're going to be pointing down and I'm sure the township has ordinances that they're going to have to comply with. However, I just want to make sure that special attention is there because we're used to looking at it nothing. I know we're going to be looking at it something, but it would be nice if it was minimal.
Kristy McBride, 125 Hidden Springs. I have the same concerns about the road and the Forestville Wright Street intersection that everyone's already mentioned. Lori Watchme-Ger, rear end of there last year, like has already even stated, everyone has been in an accident there and knows someone who has. It's a really bad intersection. My other comment was I read in the PUD request that Longyear intends to repave Forestville Road up to that intersection, but it says only after the utility installation and improvements to the intersection have been made. So if that intersection doesn't get improved, what's happening to Forestville Road after they put in all the utilities? Are they not going to improve the road at all until the road commission does something to that intersection? What are we going to be left with?
Hello, I'm Lori Husorth, the executive director of the NTN, 611 Craig Street. Sorry, I live in the township. Just quickly, I wanted to speak a few words to the trail systems out there and let you know, Longyear's been a great partner to us for over 20 years. They came to us pretty early on and we did work with them to try to find a new route for the trail, which we're actually quite excited about, a new trail along the basin. And we do have plans in the interim when they start the development and for a final trail through the development when it's done. And we've been pushing them really hard for additional trail mileage out in that area because an impact on the trail system is going to be significant as we put more people onto that trail system. And there isn't a lot of miles out there that, in that area right now. So just so you know, we are working closely with them to not only work through this development, but to propose some additional trail access in the future.
Nathan Lowen, 225 Forestville Basin Drive, Trail. Again, my concern would be the road is the major issue. We've had a lot of meetings throughout the last year and we've kind of been discussing how it's maybe the one of the worst intersections in Marquette Township. And now I just don't understand how another 100 homes is going to affect that and I don't feel like we have a decent enough answer on that to be going through with this unfortunately at this period of time. I have a great time working with Longyear. They've been really communicative with us and I'm excited if there's going to be a developer that they would be that developer, but I still have concerns about the road and the safety. When I look at the PUD, there are qualifications and one of them is that it can't be excessive use on utilities, but also on the road. And we know that that's, it's a problem at this period of time. So that's one major concern. Another thing I had is, I don't understand how we jump from scenic residential to urban residential. Because it definitely seems as though it's high density. I know no one's really bringing that up, but it definitely doesn't seem like it fits in with our current scenic residential area that we have. I live on Forestville Basin. We have smaller acreage. We're not five acres, but it's about one house for three acres. Any concerns? Yes, thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Gervais and I'm the chief executive officer with the Lake Superior Community Partnership. We're located at 101 West Washington. First off, I just want to acknowledge the decision that you have before you tonight. As a former planning commissioner myself and a really rapidly growing community, these decisions are never easy. I want to acknowledge also that everyone here has been relatively positive tonight, right? Everyone has concerns about this, but no one has said, don't do it yet at this stage. I think that's really encouraging to us as an economic development organization. Jay and Longyear has been an incredible partner in economic development all throughout the entire county for many, many years and we're really excited to see them now moving into the housing industry as well. To give you some context, and Jason sort of referred to this in his comments, in 2020, there were 530 units approved across the entire Upper Peninsula for housing. Let that sink in, 530 units in 15 counties. So you now see New York potentially able to approve 240 just a few years later. And those 240 are within a context of hundreds more that are likely going to be happening here in Marquette County over the next couple of years. Some of which will be affordable and attainable and smaller and some will be large and some will be at all different price points. And that's really critical for us as an economic development organization because the housing shortage isn't just at one price point on the income scale. It is everywhere. Our hospital systems, we're seeing doctors tearing down jobs, we're seeing accountants' search jobs, we're seeing folks, of course, who have been here for a long time also get priced out of our communities and we don't want to see that happen either. So allowing new housing developments at all typologies allow folks to move within the housing market and to open those additional housing opportunities up for us. I also simply want to acknowledge again the importance of being here tonight. This has been a really long process and these types of complex projects should be. There should be public engagement. There should be a lot of thought process put into these. And the township and all of its partners have done a really incredible job working with the developer and other partners on this potential project. And so we're really excited to be here tonight. We're really excited you're at this decision point tonight. We really do encourage you to approve this preliminary putt so we can move forward and see some much, much needed housing here in this community.
Lynn Durand, 265 Bishop Woods Road. Excuse me, I have a question for Roger first. As the township supervisor, I don't have that hat on tonight, would I be allowed to update the planning commission on what the board is working on? I'm sure Fin does done an excellent job of relaying on the road issues we're working on. Would that not be appropriate?
Without knowing what that content is, I'm not in a position to respond to that. There is Michigan case law suggesting that if in advocacy status, that it would be inappropriate.
Okay. Let's, let's just back up a little bit then and say that three or four years ago, before the road commission did the upgrade that they did, the township board went to, I think it was a tap grant, maybe Jason remembers, it was $150,000 towards some kind of transportation enhancement that we applied for, for that intersection. And we didn't know that the road commission at the same time was also applying for that grant and it was awarded to them. So they used those funds appropriately to realign that intersection. That's when that happened. It had to have been three or four years ago. So that was our focus back then, long before Longyear came to us as township and said they wanted to do this development. Safety at that intersection has been number one for the township as it's evolved. Whenever the US 41 project happened, at the time, Director Iwaniki said that that Walmart intersection was the most dangerous in the UP, definitely in his county. When 41 came in, that was the first thing they wanted to do is fix that intersection. The second intersection was Forestville, which is why we jumped on and tried to figure out what had to be done. As Jason said in his opening remarks, the township board has not forgotten that road. We will not forget that road. We made a statement in one of our meetings saying that the safety of that intersection is number one and we supported that actually over supporting the Longyear project because that intersection has to be fixed. So I just want to remind you that we are committed to that and to do whatever we have to do. We've already tried to get some funding. We're going to continue to do funding, look for grants or partnerships. The roads do belong to the road commission, so we're kind of hamstringed, remember, but we're going to do whatever we can, just so you know.
Dave Petla, 130 South Forestville Road. I just don't understand how you can have, even if you improve the intersection of Forestville Road, it sounds like there's still only going to be 100 additional homes that's going to support max. It's already a disaster and it's going to, absolutely going to be a worse disaster. How you could possibly have no alternative and approve this subdivision with more than our homes, to me, doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to me. So I guess I'll be the guy that says, don't do it. Because I think it's, it's just harp a little harsh here. You don't have an alternative. Even if the road goes to Big Bay Road, who's going to go on that road unless you put a cul-de-sac and stop any traffic going down to the intersection of Forestville Road? And then you're going to have all the traffic going on that road and it's going to be a high-density problem over there. Because anybody who lives in here in Woods or in that subdivision, if this road is open, is going to take it. And you're going to have 240 cars going this way and 10 going that way to get there. So you don't have an alternative. How can you possibly approve 240 homes? I could see maybe 80 homes, 100 homes, but to do that with no plan of action made and no funding and no, nothing else to go by, that intersection is terrible. You all know what it is. My mother almost killed or got killed on that intersection, my own mom did. So everybody's got a story on that intersection. So I don't know, just on that alone, I can't see how it can be possibly approved for that many homes.
Hi there. Karen Kolbeck, City Manager for the City of Marquette. I'm just here to express support for this project and moving forward. As Christopher had mentioned, that this is a significant amount of housing that would be added to our community. And I say community because it extends beyond just the Marquette city for my, for my concerns. And the city commission did approve the 425 agreement or entering into a 425 agreement with the township for this property to be transferred into the township for development. And so we certainly support adding this amount of housing into our, our greater number for the next five to seven years. And I think Christopher referenced that 500 units of housing back in 2020 in a single year for the entire UP. And we're looking at around 600 units of housing being added to the housing stock within the next five to seven years. And this is a significant portion of that. So we are here to show support, but then also to remind everybody that we're here together as well and working collectively to come up with a solution for some of those concerns, which the commission did express some concerns for the road, but knowing full well that we're working together to come up with a solution as well because we are all impacted and are all certainly interested in the safety of all of our community residents. Thank you.
Hi, Nellor Swidley, Hidden Springs Drive. Jim, I hope you don't hit the gavel and maybe I'll go a minute or two over. Just have a couple of comments and a couple of questions at the end. You know, the pattern of the current land use in this area is large acreage residential, as you know. This is the rural residential nature of the township as you get away from core. Find it interesting that Longyear's requested the current zoning, single residential a few years back, which is five acres per home. Find that interesting? You know, and that's in pattern with the other developments that have gone on here on Woods. It's two and a half acres, I believe, per home site average, Forestville Basin, somewhere in that range, maybe a little more. And so if this is approved at this density, it's going to change this area forever. It's a well-thought-out plan. I'm a seasoned developer and I can, you know, it's a nice plan, but the area, it's not suitable for this kind of density, not to mention just the traffic concerns alone. And I don't understand why they're insisting on so many units. It's aggressive. I just finished Carlo Farms' master planned PUD in the city of Marquette. Had a lot of different components. Took 17 years to sell out 84 lots. Marquette County's historic demand of single-family permits countywide runs, in the last 13, 15 years, runs between 79 and 135 single-family permits countywide, countywide. That's the, that's the numbers. This market does not have a lot of housing depth to it and still relatively stable population. So I don't understand why so aggressive when, you know, we were really good at it and took 17 years to sell 84 lots. We're doing design and building as well. That's a question. A lot of this, these concerns go away if this project is scaled back to a more reasonable density. And... And that road commissions request township board, bless their hearts, are working hard to get that funding with the county road commission, has requested a state level to fix that intersection. It's a good plan, bold of our concept. Sounds like the best-case scenario, but that has not been funded. There's no guarantee that's going to be funded yet. We hope it is, but even, even the first phase of this will have a dramatic increase in traffic and impact on this area with it as is. I know that they, I read their document, they're proposing to do sanitary, but minor sand, the force main sewer and redo the road up to that intersection, but there's a lot of ifs there. And I think a lot of that is perhaps predicated on the county getting that intersection fixed. We don't have that funding guarantee. So how can we approve this with all the concerns of your residents with traffic and the impact on this? How can we approve this before that intersection is fully funded and fixed at a minimum? How can we do that? We already have a problem there, and it's only going to get worse until that's done. And without that guarantee, it's a huge question mark and concern for residents. I'm requesting, well, I was curious about the urban residential, urban residential density. I just don't feel that that's a good fit as justification for this rural residential low-density area. It's in your ordinance, but no one's going to convince me that that's an urban area. I mean, that, with that kind of density. I mean, I saw on the setbacks that, well, setbacks are kind of normal, and when you try to achieve a four units to the acre or three units to the acre, but I saw 10-foot rear yard setback, really? That's from me to you, to the property line, and, you know, 28, 20 feet between rear yards. That's where people usually enjoy their space and have a little bit of a buffer with trees. 10-foot doesn't leave any trees between homes. It's aggressive. So I'm going to, I basically request that you table this until this intersection is fully funded and completed, or unless it's the developer, scale it back to something reasonable that doesn't have this kind of impact, 100 units or something, you know, half the density. I just do not understand why they're insisting on the number of units at this scale. So those are my comments and a couple of questions thrown in there for somebody to ponder on and address at some point. Thanks.
Thanks, bud.
Hi, Brian Kramer, 115 here on Woods. I'm going to echo Lynn's comments and ask you to lighten the client to approve this PUD tonight in its present form. I'm not against development, but I don't believe it meets the current requirements. I had a chance to read most of the documents that were sent out. Section 1307 of the ordinance states the PUD shall be only approved if it complies with each of the following. First, the PUD complies with all conditions of 1302. 1302, item C, says the proposed type and density shall not result in unreasonable increase in the need or burden on public service. Transportation infrastructure is a public service. We've heard much of the complaints and challenges of the existing intersection. The email back, or the response from the Marquette Rock County Road Commission states the existing intersection of Forestville and Wright Street would not safely support traffic flow as presented in the PUD. They have completely retracted the 100 units. I would assume that A is based on the 2021 traffic study, which was during the pandemic when miles driven was significant. The email also states there's no improvements proposed and nothing funded. There is no endgame in sight to fix that intersection. To me, this is a clear, unreasonable burden, and therefore the PUD should not be approved. The other item that I'm thinking about is 1307, item B. The ordinance states the PUD is compatible with the surrounding use of land and the capabilities of the public service and facilities. We know the PUD is not compatible with the road, right? The land was zoned, seen as residential for a reason, that's five-acre lots. I understand the PUD allows for exceptions to go from what should be 200,000 square-foot lots down to 10,000 or 20,000 square-foot lots. Isn't it just bending the rules? It's shattering them. I don't understand the density there. That is not what folks bought into in the Forestville neighborhood, the existing 60 or 70 homes back there. Gosh, that feels like a miss. Townhomes, gosh, we've got to ask ourselves, why? Why townhomes? We don't know, right? But have to think about, maybe that's due to profit margin, and they sell them for more. If you look at what the townhomes went for in this county, I think that might be the answer, but I'm not sure. My ask is please don't approve this in its present state. I think there are options, I think we can find common ground here. Something like one-acre lots feels better. Something like single-family homes feels better. 80 homes. The other really interesting thing, Jason, you shared this, but when you read the nuances of the PUD and the ordinance, 35% of the land has to be devoted to green space. So some quick math here, 164 acres, okay? 35% of that leaves us with roughly 100 acres. Anybody who's used those trails back there understands there's some steep terrain, it cannot all be developed. So starting with 100 acres, gosh, there's maybe some common areas for roadways. Maybe there's parts that can't be developed. You're left with roughly 80 acres, which is the same number you add up, 80 acres, one acre per home. That feels reasonable for a community that is zoned, seen as residential. Thank you.
So I wanted to take an opportunity to address some of the comments made by everybody here tonight. I'll start at the top from the first comments and work my way down. So we had two different neighborhood meetings out at the Enteyan Trailhead in Forestville, and a lot of what has been mentioned here tonight was mentioned there as well. So I think the first thing that came up is the lighting for the site. We understand that's a concern to the neighbors across the basin. We will, of course, adhere to the township zoning ordinance in terms of lighting and not do any unnecessary site lighting. So the goal here is that because we've designed the site efficiently, there doesn't need to be a ton of street lighting. It's not going to, you know, be a big parking lot and look like a Walmart. It's definitely going to be subdued, and we'll stick within the zoning ordinance. And of course, lights off the back of homes shining across the basin, that's just not going to happen. We have a 200-foot setback from the basin edge that we won't be building in, so there will be decent tree coverage there to kind of shade. And so people from across the basin shouldn't really be able to see in now all that much. We're going to keep that tree coverage there. So lighting. The township water and the pressure, I guess I'd have Kevin talk about that in a second here. But the DUAC, I guess their question was, is that on units or on buildings? My understanding is that's dwelling units per acre, if I'm understanding that right, Jason?
Yes, and dwelling unit as defined in our ordinance, just for informational purposes, is one or more rooms designed, occupied, or intended for occupancy as separate living quarters with cooking, sleeping, and sanitary facilities provided within the dwelling unit for exclusive use if they were family maintaining a household. So structure.
So if you have a town home, there's four dwelling units in it?
Townhome is more akin to duplex, right?
Yeah, so we have duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes planned.
So then if you have a fourplex, that's four dwelling units?
Yes.
You can go over on your math then.
We have 200, the max number of units, so we call them keys. The max number of keys is 240. The number of buildings would be less than that because you can have so many.
So.
I heard a mention about the Forestville Basin Road, which I believe is the road that services the Blue Heron Bluffs neighborhood to the north of the basin. My understanding is that is a private road. I don't believe that's something that's been taken over by the county. So for our project, we wouldn't be performing any maintenance on that road. It's, my understanding is it's private and it has nothing to do with our project. I had a question about the dam. Will it be damaged? So before we do anything on the project site, obviously permits need to be pulled, everything has to be saved. Again, we have an easement with the dam because BLP is right there, and we have a FERC easement that says we can't get within a certain distance of that dam, making sure everything's safe and everything's taken care of during the building.
Is that called a FERC easement?
Yeah, F E R C, yes. And I couldn't tell you what it stands for, I just know it exists.
Energy Regulatory Commission.
There you go.
Thanks.
And then everything will obviously be permitted, it'll all run through Eagle, the township, the county, and all that stuff. Somebody had noted our, our commitment to repaving Forestville Road after utilities were put in. To clarify that, we are holding in our project plans that the road will be restored to what it looks like now, so all the utilities will be in the right-of-way, and so the shoulders will be cleaned up and the road will be back together. The point of saying that we would repave Forestville Road after the intersection improvements were made was so that you would get a nice, clean, brand-new strip of road, and you wouldn't be tearing it up later if the intersection is to be dealt with. So that was just to make sure that everything tied in nicely. I wanted to note to everybody here as well that our plans for construction traffic are to move everything to the north out to Big Bay. And again, just to reiterate that this, not all of these homes are coming online at one time. These are going to be chunks of 15 to 20, maybe 30 homes coming on. So this won't be a big, you know, smash-down of 100 homes at once. It's going to be over several years. There's a lot of opportunity in there to support grants, funding opportunities, and things like that. I would address Mr. Swadley's question about our previous request for scenic residential. So yes, at one point, we did request for this to be scenic residential at that point in time. I don't know what year it was, but I'm sure Marquette looked very different. Right now, there is critical demand, like Christopher was speaking about, for housing. And unfortunately, scenic residential, although that is what the surrounding area is, it's just not supported with the dam, the demand right now of the demographics of the area. So the planning and development allows us to design a site that is efficient and it makes for smaller footprints of home, which makes for a better price point for people. We know if we're talking about tackling affordability and attainable price points, scenic residential is not a price point that is attainable for a lot of people who live in this area. That was one of the motivating factors of utilizing a planning and development, actually offering something that more people can move into. I think the note about urban residential was brought up by a couple of people. I would maybe ask Jason to reiterate that urban residential is the standard in the zoning ordinance, so that is what we designed to. I think we're in a healthy spot within what's allowed there. Our design was based off of smart growth principles that have been laid out in the Marquette Township Master Plan, focusing on efficiency of design, compactness, not overutilizing land, not disturbing wetland areas. So I know people have mentioned that there's areas in the project that seem undevelopable. Anything is developable with enough money, but why would we do that? Why would we mess up the wetland? We'll choose not to. So we were designing based off of those principles, and the principles of smart growth really works to build a neighborhood where people are close to their neighbors, they're interacting with one another, they're living an active lifestyle. That's what the design was based off of, so I think that speaks to the density, it speaks to the number of homes and all of those design decisions that we've made. That was pulled out of the smart growth principles as pointed out in the master plan. And then the setbacks, I think it's a good point that Mr. Swadley made, and I can explain it a little bit, because all of our homes are designed as single-story, so that we're able to accommodate people with different levels of mobility. You're not climbing stairs. When you're purchasing this home, you're purchasing a home that hopefully you can live in for a very long time. That is why our setbacks are a little bit smaller, because obviously the spread of all the living space of the home is squattier. You don't get to go up, you're all on one level, so it does take up more floor space. And because we have so many different designs, they can all fit within our minimum lot sizes, but there's going to be a lot of maneuvering and placing them where people want them to go. So we're a little bit more lenient with the setbacks so people can make those decisions. And then the last would be, I think, the intersection, obviously. So we've done multiple traffic studies on this. We continue to be supportive of everything that the Marquette County Road Commission is doing on this. I understand the safety is of the utmost importance. It was one of the first things that we looked at when we started looking at this project. At this point in time, we continue to be supportive of the road commission, and I would say that any decisions about the number of homes or the number of cars on there daily, I mean, I think it's, we've taken the Marquette County Road Commission's comments on that to be, that they're comfortable with that 100-home mark, and we're more than happy to participate in figuring out that solution, but that's, that's where we stand today, is trusting their opinion on that.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
I'd like to revisit the, putting the new infrastructure in, the sewer into your, your project, and you're going to be running that right from Wright Street?
Yeah, so.
Okay, let me, let me just finish my question, then we can get into it. So you're, you're talking about putting it in the right-of-way? You're talking about putting it underneath existing pavement? Where would the sewer go?
It would be outside of the pavement, but within the county right-of-way.
It would be outside, within the county right-of-way, so any?
66th, right-of-way, that road's only about 24.
Okay, so, and you don't anticipate any pavement damage, anything like that? The road's not going to be impacted at all by all that construction work going on there?
We were actually discussing that today with Ober Sar, who's likely going to be the contractor that actually builds the job.
Okay.
And we're actually considering drilling it. That's one option.
Okay.
But if we did open cut it, then of course we'd be responsible for replacing anything we disturbed.
Okay. And so you, what, you're drilling a bore and jacking, is that a relative same, same term?
Yes.
Okay, so is there any, 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 any rock that you're considering that you have to blast through?
No.
No?
We've, we've done borings throughout the entire property.
Okay.
Some areas where.
I mean, no, I'm talking along, along Forestville Road.
Right, no.
There's no rock in there that you have to deal with?
There is rock, but not that we're anticipating hitting.
Okay, so you're not going to blast then? You don't anticipate blasting. So then again, the, the statement was made, once the intersection is done, then you pave the road. Is that quite correct?
Yes.
And if the intersection's never done, you're never going to pave the road?
When the intersection is done, we would repave the road.
Why couldn't you pave the road to within 200 feet of the intersection? That way you could have any design of that intersection, and the rest of the road would be paved.
We have, because I think part of what the intersection could include is possibly some sort of multi-use path. I know Jason has brought that up to us before, so repaving the road, we'd want to be including that at that time and connecting it to the intersection for the intersection design.
Is that correct?
We definitely want a multi-use path if possible.
But is that your, is that your, your understanding as far as when the construction's done? That the path has to go in at the same time?
I guess my general understanding was that when the utilities would be put in, then the road would be addressed as well.
Okay, so, but that's not what she's saying. She's saying when the intersection is done to, to, you know, the new intersection, but I'm saying if that new intersection's never done, is that road ever going to be paved?
I think it would be up to the township to address paving the road, but we would not be, we would not be paving it. We would be restoring it, restoring the work that Kevin's talking about on the shoulder.
I thought somebody said it was going to be all brand-new and smooth. I, I think that's what you said, right? We'd go in there and make that road all brand-new and smooth.
Once the intersection was updated.
Okay, and if the intersection's never done, it will never be smoo, done and smooth, is that correct?
That would be a Marquette County Road Commission.
Okay, so up, up until then, you would pay for it if they put in an intersection?
Yes.
But if they don't put in an intersection, you're not going to touch it, right?
Probably not.
Okay.
If I could jump in here for a second, I just, you know, we start discussing things like that, and maybe we shall pump our brakes a little bit, because this is a preliminary equivalent meeting. So when we actually go to do phase one, which is the road, the utilities, everything like that.
Excuse me, sir, would you identify yourself for that?
I'm sorry. I'm Kevin Carroll with U B Engineers and Architects.
Thank you.
1300 High Street. I actually drive up Wright Street twice a day for work. I work up in Ishburn, so I understand. But what I wanted to say is that we still have to. But what I wanted to say is that we still have to come back and get final approval for Phase One.
Can we just let these folks speak? You've all had your chance to speak, let them speak.
So what I was going to say is we still have to come back and get final approval before we can proceed with Phase One. That's not necessarily what we're deciding here tonight.
Well, I, I believe we are deciding that now. We're going to put contingencies on it that it can't be more than 100 units developed before X, Y, and Z happens. So that's, that's what we're actually doing here. You're going to come back with a preliminary, a, a final plan that we're never going to see again as planning commissioners.
Yes, you are.
Yeah.
And we, and we can deny it at that point?
You can approve, deny, or approve with condition.
The final, the final PUD?
Yes.
So we're going to, we're going to come back with our Phase One plan.
Okay.
Finalized, fully engineered and everything like that.
Okay.
And at that time, that's when we would look at firm decisions on what's happening with the road, what's happening with the utilities, things like that. And that would be that first phase. And then, you know, say it takes five years, we'd come back with the second phase.
Okay. Okay, but again, the statement was made that if we don't get the intersection done by the road commission or funded, we're not going to pave the road. And that's going to be up to the county to pave the road. Is that correct? Is that the way you understand it too?
Yeah, if, if we're not touching the road, um...
Then why, why would you pave it at all then?
I guess that might be something that...
Yeah, I have some thoughts on that.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is David Call, and I'm a foreigner on LP. We're council for Longyear. I, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I wanted to quickly address this road thing, because it obviously is something that there's a lot of concern about, and, you know, Longyear is of course concerned about it too. I guess I'll start with a couple, a couple observations about the project generally as it relates to the road. One of the things I think that's nice about this project is that it's housing that is designed largely to be suitable for seniors. And, and that is actually irrelevant to this road issue, because of all the types of housing that can go in there, housing for seniors probably is the most beneficial. It was stated by somebody that one of the things that's unique about the areas, you've got about a 15-minute rush hour, and that's when people are, you know, getting their kids bundled up to take them to school, going to work, coming home from work, picking up kids from school. And so one of the nice things about a senior project in this location is that of all the projects that you could have, that is probably one that's going to be the least likely to have those sorts of, you know, scheduling. Seniors go to the shopping market at 10:00 AM or 11:00 AM. Most of them don't go to work. If they do work, they may not work regular hours. So, so one of the nice things, excuse me, one of the nice things about this project is that factor. Now, specific, specific to the road and the design issues, frankly, the issue with this intersection is not the last, you know, 100 or 200 or 300 homes that go in, whether they're for seniors or not. It's the thousands or tens of thousands of cars that use the intersection on a daily basis. And so, you know, there is, the road commission is the one that is obligated to fix this. They have funding to do that. They have an obligation to do that. In fact, the road commission is, and Roger can tell you this, but, you know, most, most municipalities have got governmental immunity, but the road commission has no governmental immunity for unsafe intersections. So they have incentive to fix this, and I think that, you know, Longyear is especially with an approved project incentivized to work with the road commission to help ensure that this does get fixed. But the problem isn't the last 100 homes, and we don't look at the last person building a house on the street and say, now you need to go fix the stoplight that's around the corner. That's just not how it works. So I guess, you know, in, in closing, I'll just say that the, the road is an issue. The road needs to be addressed. There are methods to address this road, and approving this project, I don't think is, is going to necessarily be that rela, that relevant to whether this intersection is overburdened or not, because there's a, there's a movie theater on the other side of the intersection. There's a, there's a significant commercial project there, and these homes with, you know, probably a lot of seniors in them is going to be the least of the problem with this intersection. So I'd ask that you trust that Longyear will do whatever it can to help get this problem, this intersection, addressed, but we're going to be working closely with the road commission to make that happen.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Where in the narrative does it say that it's a project for seniors?
Well, it's designed, it's, it doesn't, I don't know if it says in the narrative it's a project for seniors, but I can tell you...
And, and your assumption is that because seniors are going to move there, it's a senior project, the road won't have that kind of demand at specific hours, the intersection? Is that what your argument is?
Well...
Do you have facts to, have facts to, under that, a statement, or is that just a specious argument?
No, no, I mean, that's actually, if you look at, if you look at road, the Engineers' Manual for Road Construction, it gives different types of uses for different, different types of traffic values for different types of uses. And if you look at seniors versus a movie theater, you're going to get very different...
Why do you keep bringing up seniors? I don't understand that.
Well, I, I, maybe explain some of that.
When we designed the homes and when we designed the site, it was with the demographic of 65 and up in mind as probably one of our biggest buyer groups.
The homes are all, are all single-story homes.
I built a single-story home 20, 30 years ago in anticipation, and when I got, got old, I'd be using it, but I certainly use the road that I'm on every day.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't dispute that. I'm just saying that of the different types of...
And I'm just saying, I don't see a senior narrative in your, senior discussion in your narrative at all.
Well, I can tell you that that is a targeted demographic, and that is why all of the homes are one-story. And if, if that wasn't the case, it'd likely be two-stores, you know, with basements in all the homes. So anyway, I understand your point, but that is, that is targeted.
Okay. I, I didn't see that anywhere.
Okay. Thank you.
I could get back to the water and sewer questions that we had. 92 PSI is pretty good. I'm not sure what happened over the years. It could be a lot of things.
It was checked by meisters when they put in the sprinkler system. I stood there and watched them, so it was right on the...
Yeah, that's actually good.
Oh, it was really great, as I said, but right now, I bet it's a...
I was actually surprised to hear that you...
Okay, excuse me, could you just address us, please? We can't have any interaction.
So back in 2021, U.P. Engineers and Architects, who I worked for, did the Marquette Township Water Reliability Study. Just looking at the demands, based on what we concluded was the typical use for a household, and that's average throughout the township, we're going to be looking at, with say 20 homes, that would be about a half a percent increase on the system. So overall, you'd be looking at maybe 4% to 5% total. And if you actually look at the township's usage, so from 2018 to 2019, there was a 15% difference in usage. The next year, there was a 6% difference. The year after that, there was a 9% difference. So we're really, overall, once the entire project's done, we're within what you typically fluctuate anyways, for demand. So what I'm trying to get at across by saying that is that it's statistically relatively And I guess if there's any more engineering questions?
Thanks, Ken.
Just want to ask one more thing here. Dan Wiggins, 150 Huron Woods. I've listened to all these guys tonight, and I want to say that Mr. Swadley, Mr. Kramer had some very good information that I wasn't aware of. And I do agree with them, the density does not fit our area. This is so wrong for our area. You're talking three houses per acre. That's a third of an acre. That's crazy. That's not like anything else in there. It doesn't match at all. So I just want to tell you that I agree with them. Second thing I want to tell you is Wright Street's not the problem, guys. Going back and forth on Wright Street, I can go back and forth on that all day. It's pulling out from Commerce, and it's pulling out from Forestville. So if you really want to test, come on down there about 8:00 in the morning and get in line with everybody else.
Anyone else? Who's going to speak?
I just want to address a couple of things that were said. I don't think, first of all...
Name, name and address, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Susan Spalding, 285 Forestville Basin Trail. I don't think anyone asked about any, anything to be done on Forestville Basin Trail. My concern was Forestville Basin Row, Road, Forestville, Forestville Road. So it's, that condition is already poor, and I only heard of that being addressed possibly once, if at all, and so that is a concern. I also, when we started the meeting tonight, I felt that this project was addressed, that it was appealing to a multitude of people, ages, income levels, and now it's being addressed or presented as a senior project. And we were talking about possibly 100 extra cars. Most cars, most families are two-people families, but then we also have children that drive, and we have guests that come here, and we have people that are using the area for recreation. So it is very heavily traveled. But then I also heard a comment saying that we were going to be directing traffic towards Big Bay. But most people that live there now, and most people that are going to be moving into this subdivision, are not really going to be driving towards Big Bay or 550 on a daily basis. They're going to be either driving to Marquette Township or Marquette City. So, and, and again, I just want to say that I agree with whoever made the comment that really we have to address some of the road issues before the approval of the subdivision could be, because that is our immediate concern. Thank you for listening.
You are right that the project has been designed...
Name, name and address, please.
Sorry, Alyssa Arwood, 210 North Front Street. You are right that the project was designed with a very wide demographic in mind. However, we know through marker research and all the demand that we've gotten, all the correspondence that we've received, that our biggest buyer group, the group that's likely to have the most presence in this neighborhood, is going to be that 65 and up community. So I just wanted to clarify that, that this is not designed as a senior living area, but we know because of the demographics and the people that need to downsize into homes in the community, we are going to get a lot of 65 and up people living here. So just wanted to clear that up.
Barb Dobek, 215 Huron Woods Drive. I'm a senior, and I'm just going to say, as we get older, our reflexes are slower. So now you're putting all these older people in a position where they have to cross, turn, whatever. It's unsafe. Younger people can make decisions faster. As we age, it's a little bit harder. Our neighbor who was in his 80s, he got hit. Just talking about the senior development doesn't make me feel any better about that intersection. Makes it worse. Thank you.
So I guess I just wanted to say again...
Name and address again, please.
Kevin Ankerel, 1300 High Street, Marquette in the city. So I do drive up and down Wright Street, and I understand that it's the turnout of Forestville, turning left, you know, across two lanes of traffic of people that are going way too fast, and then it's the same thing on the other side. So the goal would be to eliminate that turning movement with the intersection improvement, which I believe the county is working on with another engineer right now. So I just wanted to make it clear to everyone that as an engineer on the project, I fully understand the issue with that intersection, and it's going to be quite a while before we actually consider, you know, a significant amount of units impacting that intersection.
Cynthia Wiggins, 150 Huron Woods Drive. This question is for Mr. Ankerel, just to clarify for myself. You stated that the first evaluation, there was on 20 units, an increase of 15%, and then 9%, and then 4%. So is it 15 plus 9 plus 4?
Kill, kill off to wait till you're done talking before he can answer you.
Okay. That's what I would like clarified, because if it is, it's, that's a different, that's 20% for 20 houses. So if you're putting in 200, it's not going to support the water flow. And we had to, when we first looked at changing the water supply from when we were on the city, which is where we started in Huron Woods, was on the city water supply. Then they got into the difference of opinion, and they took us off the city water supply onto the well field. When we went onto the well field, we had a problem with water volume, and then they were going to have to put in a whole other well field in order to support everything on the township. So if we ran into that issue at that point in time, putting in 240 units all drawing water is going to run into a similar problem. And our neighbor across the street from us, Maggie, was on a well, and her well went dry in February. She had to tap into the city system. So the water thing, the math doesn't make sense. So if you could, if you could explain, thanks.
Yeah, sorry, I, if I jumbled my words there, those big differences...
Name and address again.
Kevin Ankerel, 1300 High Street, City of Marquette. So those, those big percentages that I was reading off were the fluctuations from year to year that the township experiences right now. With the per-year percent inflation, for 20 units, you'd be looking at right around a half a percent increase. For all of the units total, you'd be looking at about 4.5% increase. So your system fluctuates 10, 15% a year. By the time all three phases would be completed, you'd only have a 4.5% increase.
Mr. Anker, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
This water supply is going to come from the township's water supply, which is shared with the city? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So this is not, what you're saying, the Forestville project is not going to draw on, on wells? Is that correct?
It's connecting to the township system.
The township wells?
Yeah.
I see. Okay, thank you.
The system's supplemented by the city of Marquette and Lake Superior.
Yeah, so we have to, we can't submit to Eagle yet for a permit. The state of Michigan's going to review all these calculations, but we can't do that until we have township approval first. So I have talked with Lenny Bedenas, the DPW supervisor, about this, and he doesn't see a concern. But I just want to remind everyone that at this preliminary phase, we still have to go through the state of Michigan. We still have to come back with all our detailed calculations for your approval. So there's quite a few hoops that we have to get through with approvals and reviews to calculation before, you know, we can even break ground.
Thank you.
Well, I might as well get up once again, too, because everybody else is. Laura Swadley, 135 Hidden Springs Drive. Just a point of clarification. I appreciate Mr. Heckanen's comments about, like, questioning about the road, Forestville Road getting restored. Forestville Road north of Huron Woods is, is wide, is pretty, it's in pretty good shape. South of Huron Woods entrance to the intersection, it's really rough. The terrain is extreme. You've got a creek crossing that is guardrail to guardrail. There is no shoulder. There is no way you could run us even a two-inch force main down there without tearing up at least one lane. The water main runs in the west lane. I know, because we built it years ago. It's, the road's pretty well shot. There's very little shoulder. You have a steep bank on one side, and you've got a wetland and a creek on the other. It's very narrow. If any work that is done between this entrance of Huron Woods Drive and that intersection, if anyone knows how that vertical alignment is, pretty rough, is going to require that to be redone. You can't get excavators in there. You might do directional boring for part of it here or there, but it's going to be impacted, and the county road commission will require a developer to restore it to their new standard, not to the old broken-up pavement standard with no shoulder. And whether or not there's any room to do, in order to get a bike path along the side, even if it's next, you know, they do curb and gutter, require you guys to do that, there's going to be some pretty significant terrain, earth movement to even widen that in some sections to get a, a shoulder in there. It's pretty tight in there between Pesolus Farm, the entrance with the bridge over the creek there. It's narrow as can be in there, and so there's significant work. And it'd be great if it all got redone, and the county road commission required... all got redone and county road commission required you guys to, you know, redo it and all of that, but I just want to be clear, that has to be done. There's no way somebody's going to go in there and avoid redoing that portion of the road, so.
David Cullen, Barnum LLP. Just one quick clarification on the, on the road and the paving. So when work is done in the roadway, requires permit. To get the permit, you have to post bond. Bond ensures that you can restore any damage done to the road when the work is complete. So in terms of work being done on the road, road being restored, certainly that is insured. In terms of Longyear volunteering to pave a road, that is a public road, that is an off-site road, as an off-site improvement, the general rule under Michigan laws, that can't be a requirement of, you know, the road commission or any other really governmental improvement. It's an off-site improvement. However, I understand that Longyear has volunteered to do that on the condition that the road, you know, intersection gets improved. And I think the reason why that was conditioned on the road intersection being improved is because it may be realigned and it didn't make a ton of sense to, to do that until we know where the, how it's realigned. But the other, I think, key, key factor there is that absent Longyear agreeing to do that, the road commission has to do that. And so that provides frankly, an incentive for other work on the intersection. So I think there's, you know, merit to not doing that unless and until the intersection gets approved for that additional reason as well. Thank you.
Anyone else addition to speak?
I would just like to say thank you to everybody for being here today and thank you to the consideration of the planning commission. We take these comments, you know, we take them very seriously. They're not taken lightly. Things like the lighting and the water pressure and all these things I've written down today, we will make sure that they are addressed in a final plan if we're allowed to move forward in that manner. So we will most certainly take all of the feedback from the neighbors and things that are within our power to make better on our plan so that we are not as large of a nuisance to them as they think we might be. We will certainly do those things and we will address all of that. So I have a long list here and we will, we'll address it for our final plans certainly. Thank you.
It's time, guys, then I'm out of here. Dan Wiggins, 150 Huron Woods. I'm just going to ask, please don't do this. Don't do it. The density is wrong. The road is wrong. Don't put the cart before the horse. Don't build the buildings and then think we're going to fix the road. Getting the money or the grant, it's pie in the sky until it's in your hand. Everybody knows that. So I ask, please don't do this right now.
Susan Spaulding, 285 Forestville Basin Trail. I, I'm just, sorry if I'm asking a wrong question, but I just wonder what next? Will we be notified or will there be a public announcement? Thank you.
Kristy McGrath, 125 Hidden Springs Drive. I just had a question. Do we know how many houses are currently feeding into Forestville Road?
We, we will, we'll answer that.
Okay. So I'm just, just looking at it, in my mind, there's not 100 houses that go onto that road. So we're talking about increasing the amount of vehicles on that road threefold, which seems unreasonable. In the CD request, it said the increased demand and need for extension of public utilities will not result in an unreasonable burden on public infrastructure. Three times the volume on that road seems unreasonable. Thank you.
Okay, going once, going twice. All right, we'll close the public hearing at 8:33. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Yes, I have a comment. Mr. Chairman? First of all, I'd like to thank the planning commission staff, Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Powers, for their fine work in securing and compiling all the documents necessary for our review of this proposed PUD. And also to thank Ms. Alyssa Arwood and the Longyear Company and their engineers and so, and their attorneys for the very professional presentation on this matter. Since Ms. Arwood's initial presentation to the commission in September of 2022, I have had the opportunity to personally walk and inspect the proposed PUD site, to review multiple documents and to research the issues involved. I also want to thank the people who came here tonight to give public comment. This is what binds a community together, this type of democratic interchange. It's a sign of civic strength and we do appreciate your being here. I have objections to this proposed PUD. They are not necessarily the same objections that have been voiced here tonight and by my objections, not including yours, I don't mean to diminish any objections that anybody has made. Based on the current form and content of this PUD application, I cannot, cannot support its approval because I find that it fails to meet at least two of the minimum legal qualifying conditions of our zoning ordinance, namely Article 13, Section 1302D, which states that the proposed development shall be consistent with the public health, safety and welfare of the township, and Section 1302H, which states that the proposed development must be consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the Marquette Township Comprehensive Development Plan, otherwise known as the Master Plan. The Master Plan outlines and defines goals and objectives as a to-do list to let prospective investors and residents know what is expected, desired and supported for the welfare of township residents. And a significant Master Plan objective is to let investors and developers such as Longyear know that we desire and expect an adequate supply of housing for all residents with housing opportunities for all income and age groups, and that developers such as Longyear should provide more affordable housing. These are quotes from the Master Plan. Unfortunately, in its current form, the proposed Forestville PUD is neither consistent with the welfare of our township nor with the goals and objectives of the township's Master Plan because it fails to provide even a minimum number of so-called workforce housing units or units that are affordable to middle-income residents of our township and surrounding area. Since the certification of the Master Plan in July of 2020, it has been well-recognized and documented by state and local government officials and community leaders that the general welfare of our community has been negatively impacted to an ever-increasing degree by the lack of available and affordable middle-income and workforce housing units. For example, local media reporting on Marquette County's attempts to find middle-income housing solutions noted that middle-income housing describes homes generally for households with yearly incomes between $35,000 and $75,000 and that this demographic group constitutes the UP's primary population in need of housing. It also reported that the past CEO of the Lake Superior Community Partnership, Sarah Lucas, confirmed that local businesses regularly complained, quote, "That one of the challenges they have in attracting workers to the community is the shortage of housing that is affordable to those workers," close quote. Just recently, a local business owner informed our planning commission that their employees have quit because they could not find affordable housing in our community. The Mining Journal, in an article of October 28th, 2022 by Kristy Mastrick, reporting locally that the lack of affordable housing is at the top of many municipalities' lists of concerns, interviewed the current Lake Superior Community Partnership CEO, Mr. Christopher Germaine, who is here tonight. She interviewed him regarding the plight of many local residents who struggled to find a home they can afford. Mr. Germaine was quoted as stating that locally, quote, "An average median income earner could afford a home only in the $150,000 to $200,000 range," close quote, which he contrasted to local, quote, "luxury housing," close quote, in the $450,000 to $500,000 range, which would be unaffordable to that median income group. That same report noted that the city of Marquette now defines housing affordability to mean a household spends 30% or less of its, of their gross household income on all housing expenses, which includes all housing expenses, not just monthly rent or mortgage payments. It also defines workforce housing as housing that is affordable for households earning 80% to 120% of the area median income. Last year, in response to this affordable housing crisis, our governor released a comprehensive study entitled Michigan's Statewide Housing Plan. I have attached to my comments here tonight, a page from that report, which shows that the median household income for existing homeowners is $72,730 per year and that the maximum affordable home price for these existing homeowners is $182,825. It is difficult to see how the argument that's been advanced here tonight, that this will somehow shake up the housing market in Marquette County so that people will sell their homes and buy units in Forestville, makes any sense. In comparison to the existing homeowner statewide median income of $72,730, the median household income for our township is even less. It's at $63,826. At the initial September 2022 presentation on this proposed PUD, in response to my questions, Ms. Arwood confirmed that although Longyear was aware of the issue of a lack of affordable housing in our area and of various programs that might address that issue, the company did not, did not intend to participate in such efforts for this PUD. And, she confirmed, that the prices of homes in this PUD would be purely driven by market forces and that the smallest homes in this plan would be 1,500 square feet with a minimum market-driven price point of 400,000. Thus, the facts appear to show that in its current form, this PUD proposal does not provide affordable middle-income housing or workforce housing for our township residents and therefore is not consistent with the general welfare provisions of the zoning ordinance nor with the goals and objectives of our Master Plan and for these reasons must be rejected. However, it is my belief that with certain modifications, this PUD could meet, could meet the necessary legal requirements. And this would be without the planning commission in any way dictating price points. It would be a result of a certain design and configuration. One possibility for the developer is to agree to design and construct a certain number of housing units with smaller square footage as studio and one-bedroom condominiums in a multi-story configuration similar to the Robertson Brothers Developer Plan for the Edge Project in Fernwood, Michigan, or the Renovari Developer Plan for the Munaseen Marketplace in Munaseen, Michigan. This conceivably would allow market forces to set lower and affordable price points for the middle-income and workforce housing demographic. If the Longyear Company would agree here tonight to make a public commitment that at least 10% of the first 100 units constructed would indeed be designated as affordable housing for buyers who fit into the middle-income and workforce housing parameters, I would vote to conditionally approve this PUD application. Alternatively, if the developer wishes to continue this public hearing to a future date in order to give more consideration to these issues, I will support such a continuance. Thank you.
Steve? I'm good. Questions, comments? Jason, any more comments?
You've heard it all.
Okay, well, I guess we're open motions then.
Can we, can we speak to this, the horrible housing issue quickly?
Public hearings, officer.
Can we reopen it? I'd like to hear what he has to say.
The chair can recognize anybody he chooses.
I can?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. David Cullen, Barnum LLP. I just want to speak to the thoughtful comments from Commissioner Forrow. Appreciate that. And I think that Longyear is certainly sensitive to both affordable housing and workforce housing as one of the largest employers in the region. That's obviously something that's important to it. In designing this project, that was not something that was determined to be appropriate in this location. Doesn't mean it won't happen elsewhere, doesn't mean it won't be part of another project. Any developer designing a project has to look at the standards in the zoning ordinance to figure out how to design the project and what needs to be done to make the project conform with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Under the Zoning Enabling Act, the township, any municipality, has to establish requirements and standards upon which applicants will be reviewed and approval granted. And any conditions that are imposed have to be reasonable conditions. And in addition, they have to be necessary to meet the intent and purpose of the zoning requirements and be related to the standards established in the zoning ordinance for the land use or activity under consideration and be necessary to ensure compliance with those standards. I heard reference to the fact that there are general standards in the zoning ordinance to the effect that the project should be consistent with the health and safety of the general public. And that is true, although if the project complies with the zoning ordinance's standards, a general statement like that can't be used to deny a project. And I, I guess I'll just cite you to our Supreme Court, which has said that a municipality cannot give an agency the decision to refuse a permit on the basis of broad statements as to the public health, safety and general welfare alone. Rather, the ordinance must provide sufficient standards for the proper guidance of the agency. So again, this project, due to the design of the project, the significant investment in the infrastructure that's required to build the project, a significant offer of extra improvements, off-site improvements, as we discussed relative to the roadway, doesn't incorporate affordable housing because that's just not how it's designed. It's just designed to comply with the requirements in the zoning ordinance. And so I don't mean to give short shrift or to suggest that these issues are not important to Longyear, they are as an employer. However, that's just not how this project works. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond? Well, the PUD provision that governs our decisions here says that all of the conditions must be met. And one of the conditions that must be met, not only is the general welfare of the community, but also one of the conditions that must be met is that the PUD must be consistent with the Master Plan. Our Master Plan has very specific goals. It's Chapter 7, Page 9, and it definitely has objectives 6.9, 6.12 and 6.13 that make it clear that one of the things on the to-do list, and that's in the Master Plan, is to have affordable housing. And I think your plan has some very positive aspects to it, but I don't think it meets the requirements of this zoning ordinance, Section 13, especially in the context in which we find ourselves now. Okay? Maybe 20 years ago, this would not have been an issue here, but this is an issue that is affecting all of us, affecting people that sit here behind this desk and in front of this desk. So I beg to disagree with you and I think that the requirements have not been met. And that's going to be the basis for my vote and I think my, I have my own opinion. I don't know how my fellow commissioners would vote. I haven't discussed this issue. I haven't discussed my vote with anyone here tonight. This issue of affordable housing has been discussed extensively here in the last several months. So that's, that's my reasoning.
The zoning that Longyear requested, and is now requesting to do away with, is ten, twenty times smaller, five acres to quarter acre, ten thousand versus forty, two-hundred thousand. So, I don't think that's compatible with the surrounding area, and that, and that is a subjective opinion on my part, and that would be my basis for voting no for this PUD. In fact, I think when we spoke the last time in, uh, September, I said, I think personally, that I think you'd have an issue with having such small lots out there. You took that under advisement, and apparently that wasn't a big concern of yours, but that is a concern of mine.
I guess to me, it's kind of, kind of hard to say we need affordable housing, but then want bigger lots. And, I, you know, no matter what you do on this, it's, it's going to be a, a hard decision to make, because, you know, you, you want to increase the supply, which lowers the price theoretically for other houses in the community, um, but at the same time, you have all these bigger houses, but, you know, that subdivision built quite a while ago, and things are a lot different nowadays, with if you want to create affordable housing, they have to be smaller lots, and, you know, Lins were smaller up in Harler Farms than when he first developed, uh, uh...
Hereon Woods.
Hereon Woods. So, um, I guess we can, uh, see if somebody wants to make a motion, just to get it going. And this, this is a preliminary also, so there's lots of other things we can do, uh, conditions on what you want to do, and, you know, bring it, bring it back whenever they're ready to come back here, but, you know, I'd say let's, you know, try and give it a chance here and see what we can work out.
So, so I'm, um, I've lived in this community for seventy-one years, okay? I, I, I lived in the middle of Trailbridge Park. My dad owned an acre and a half of land, and around him, houses built up, okay? But I grew up on an acre and a half. It was great, okay? Wonderful. There were trees, and a school down the street, okay? And a store on a corner. And, and I have to think about, um, how lucky I am to still live in Trailbridge Park, okay? But the houses are much, much closer together. It doesn't make it any worse. The retired people do not travel as often as people who work full-time with small children. They do not. Even if they work full-time, they don't travel as much, okay? The roads are still not prime, okay? And we all know that, but we all choose to live here. I think we need to give these people who want to live in Forestville a chance. The Forestville I grew up is very different than what they're proposing, okay? I also believe that affordable housing comes from good-paying jobs in a community. Let's, like, get some of those good-paying jobs with better housing options. I also know people are moving back to this community, and they're working from home. My nephew chose to come back here and work from home. They're contributing to our community. He doesn't leave his house, except for social events. Um, I, I, I believe in this, and for those of you who have been to Florida and been to Babcock Ranch, anyone been to Babcock Ranch but me? It's a planned unit development, and I've gone there every year for probably the past eight years, and it's grown a lot. It has its own high school now, okay? So, I think we need to give it a chance, and I'll make the motion to do what, Jason usually helps us, but I'll read it, to, um, have a proposed mixed residential planned unit development, a preliminary planned unit development, PUD, on property located within the scenic residential S.R. zoning district for the Marquette Township Zoning Ordinance. Article thirteen, planned unit development, Section thirteen, planned unit development application, parcel tax ID number fifty-two dash zero-eight dash zero-zero-eight dash zero-zero-four dash zero-zero. Applicant Longyear Realty Corporation, two-ten North Front Street, Marquette, Michigan. I'm glad you don't really live there. So, um...
And to accept the review recommendations?
And to...
...by the road? By the plant?
By the planning, by Jason.
Well...
I, I don't want it to have more than a hundred units till the road is fixed to the county road specifications. Is that right?
If you're going to make a, a motion to approve it, I would prefer that it be contingent upon the items listed in the review recommendation.
Okay.
Plus the addition of number five, which would be that all other, uh, sections of the ordinance are adhered to.
Thanks, Jase.
Well, I'm not making that motion.
I'll make that motion, and you can put my name by it.
Technically, that should be all other township ordinances, not just zoning ordinances.
Like the stormwater ordinance.
Stormwater, exactly.
Yep.
Thank you.
Two second.
Thanks for coming.
Second from someone, we're going to discuss it further.
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion? No more discussion, then we will have a roll call vote, starting with Steve Hickenin?
No.
Andy Ferraro?
No.
Stephanie Cody?
Yes.
Hunter Winslow?
Yes.
Jim Johnson's a yes. Okay.
Okay, so, for recapping, the conditions were applied per the staff report, okay? And there will be a final PUD application submitted as well. Let's hope that Longyear takes to task the comments that were here, made here tonight, uh, you know, another opportunity to address comments made by the public.
Okay. Thank you. Give it a hey. Keep on to six B. He did a nice job here. He's been bored one day. He's been bored one day. Hey, can we, can we move on here, since we're kind of late?
I'm really interested in how they're going to protect the watershed from, like, two-hundred-and-forty miles fertilizer.
That was never addressed either, the, the corrosion permit thing. They never addressed that, you know?
Okay, we're, we're going to have to...
Happen when the final...
We're going to move on here since it's nine o'clock. We stole more, covered.
Let's go.
All right, six B, another public hearing, number zero-six-two-eight-two-three-dash-two. Solar Energy Systems, proposed ordinance amendments. The applicant is Marquette Charter Township, one thousand Commerce Drive in Marquette. Eric, your baby.
As the commission is aware, this is the, I think, fourth time this has come before you for discussion and consideration for the benefit of the very few remaining public. Uh, the existing ordinance requirements for solar energy systems require a special use permit granted by yourselves, the planning commission. That doesn't, doesn't matter if it's a rooftop system or a utility-grade system, it all requires a special use permit. Um, so really, the basis of these ordinance amendments was to allow accessory use, so like a rooftop system or a small ground-mounted system be permitted by right, meaning, meaning it's a staff-level decision, um, we don't have to bring a special use permit application before you. Um, and it would be, it, one benefit would be just frankly, a better use of everybody's time. So, as you, again, this is the fourth time it's come before the planning commission, so you should be aware of, uh, some of the specifics of the proposed amendments, uh, but we have broken them down into three types. Um, that would be accessory use, small principal use, and then large principal use. Um, and as I said, the dimensional requirements, such as setbacks and height requirements, or, excuse me, height restrictions, um, would be very similar to our current requirements for accessory structures, uh, as per our ordinance. So, think sheds, garages, things like that. Um, as I said, the accessory use would be permitted by right, however, any principal use, meaning, you know, a utility-grade system or even smaller than that, if it's a standalone, ground-mounted solar energy system on a parcel, um, that would still require a special use permit. Um, the requests we have received in the recent past and are dealing with now are almost all for accessory systems, so again, roof-mounted or ground-mounted systems. So, really, again, the target of these ordinance amendments is for those accessory applications. Um, I do want to make one clarification. Uh, I think it was Commissioner Hickenin that, at the last meeting, had pointed out the land use intensities were not included in the section of the use table, or the use district nomograph as shown in the ordinance. In your packet, you will see under large principal use, solar energy systems with a land use intensity of three, and under small principal use, a, a land use intensity of one. Further on in the text, in the proposed amendments for Article sixteen, there is some discrepancies between, again, that table that's shown in your packet and the text that I include in your packet. So, what I have on the screen right now is what we would propose as those land use intensities. These land use intensities are consistent with the text in the packet, but not the table in the packet. So, the, again, there's an error in the table, and this is what we would be proposing. So, a large principal use solar energy system would have a land use intensity of five, and a small principal use solar energy system would have a land use intensity of three. Um, again, that ties right back to the existing LUI requirements in our ordinance. There's a whole section on it. Um, and it, it's similarly with the accessory use, again, ties back to a lot of those existing restrictions and requirements for accessory structure, sheds, garages, the like. So, staff would recommend approval, um, and from here, we would take any, any comments made by the public, and we would, uh, submit those to the both county planning commission and the township board. Um, we would, there's no, I, I've said in a previous meeting, there's a timeframe specified for the county planning commission to make comment. There is not. So, basically, we would wait until they provide comment, might take some prodding to get some comment, um, but we would wait for them to provide comment, and then it would go to the township board, um, and they could call an additional public hearing if they wish. Um, so, that's all I have. I'd be open to any questions, um, and like I said, staff would recommend approval, contingent upon any public comment.
I guess the only question I have is for the small principal use, three seems kind of high to me for some reason. Can you explain to me why it's three and not one? It doesn't seem like it really affects a whole lot of...
So, I can't speculate on the exact reasons why, when the SES requirements, as they currently are, were written into the ordinance, um, why they required a special use permit, but in my discussions with staff people here, and, uh, board members and other commissioners that I guess were around at the time are familiar with when they were put into place, um, not light pollution, but I guess ISOs, for lack of a better term, is a concern with these. So, again, I guess a little bit higher of that land use intensity triggers a bigger, more substantial buffer yard than a lower land use intensity, if that answers your question. But, again, I'd be, if you have a different recommendation, I'd certainly be open to it. Um, that's why we're bringing it before you today, so...
I have a question, Eric. So, after the public hearing is completed, and we were asked to vote on this, if a motion is made to, if a motion is made to approve item six B in the amendment, is that sufficient language? Because are we supposed to, like, add something to, you know, to designate what you just told us about the land use intensity, or is this all incorporated in, I mean, are there any conditions, is what I'm trying to say?
In the, in the text, no. The only condition would be, again, altering the table, which is included in your packet. I think it's...
Right.
On the second page, after the, the staff reports.
Right, but would a, would a motion be appropriate just to say, motion to approve item six B?
Contingent upon fixing...
Any conditions that are set? Okay, fine, thank you.
So, can't we give the county a, a date that we want comments back by?
We could, yeah.
Yeah.
It just, it doesn't, I, I previously stated in a meeting that there's a timeline specified in the ordinance, there is not, so...
Yeah, but we can give them a time.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that, that usually works better than letting it open and...
And from, from our previous discussions on this topic, it was said that this is how other municipalities are moving towards...
Yes, this would bring...
And the city has done already correct.
Yeah. This would bring the township much, much more in alignment with surrounding communities, um, and that's, that was kind of the chief complaint from, uh, representatives at Peninsula Solar that, and other solar companies we've worked with, Peninsula Solar being, I would say, most prominent local one. Um, that was their chief complaint. Why do you guys have this requirement and other communities don't? So, um, kind of, again, behind the times, so...
Would having a, a three instead of a, a one make it harder if someone comes to...
It might take some prodding to get some comment. But we would wait for them to provide comment, and then it would go to the township board. And they could call an additional public hearing if they wish. So that's all I have. I'd be open to any questions. And like I said, staff would recommend approval, contingent upon any public comment.
I guess the only question I have is for the small principal use, three seems kind of high to me for some reason. Can you explain to me why it's three and not one? Doesn't seem like it really affects a whole lot of...
So, I can't speculate on the exact reasons why, when the SES requirements, as they currently are, were written into the ordinance, why they required a special use permit. But in my discussions with staff people here, and board members and other commissioners that I guess were around at the time are familiar with when they were put into place, not light pollution, but I guess ISOs, for lack of a better term, is a concern with these. So, again, I guess a little bit higher of that land use intensity triggers a bigger, more substantial buffer yard than a lower land use intensity, if that answers your question. But again, I'd be, if you have a different recommendation, I'd certainly be open to it. That's why we're bringing it before you today, so...
I have a question, Eric. So after the public hearing is completed, and we were asked to vote on this, if a motion is made to, if a motion is made to approve item six B in the amendment, is that sufficient language? Because are we supposed to, like, add something to, you know, to designate what you've just told us about the land use intensity, or is this all incorporated in? I mean, are there any conditions, is what I'm trying to say?
In the, in the text, no. The only condition would be, again, altering the table, which is included in your packet. I think it's...
Right.
On the second page, after the staff report.
Right. But would a, would a motion be appropriate just to say, motion to approve item six B?
Contingent upon fixing...
Any conditions that are set? Okay, fine, thank you.
So can't we give the county a date that we want comments back by?
We could, yeah.
Yeah.
It just, it doesn't, I, I previously stated in a meeting that there's a timeline specified in the ordinance, there is not, so...
Yeah, but we can give them a time.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that, that usually works better than letting it open and end it.
From our previous discussions on this topic, it was said that this is how other municipalities are moving towards...
Yes, this would bring...
And the city has done already correct.
This would bring the township much, much more in alignment with surrounding communities. And that's, that was kind of the chief complaint from representatives at Peninsula Solar that, and other solar companies we've worked with, Peninsula Solar being, I would say, most prominent local one. That was their chief complaint. Why do you guys have this requirement and other communities don't? So, kind of, again, behind the times, so...
Would having a, a three instead of a, a one make it harder if someone comes to ask for that under the special use permit?
Harder? I would say...
Like anything we've done in the past, really...
Well, it's not going to be a special use. It's going to be a permitted use, right?
Principal use, both large and small principal use, as you can see, will remain, and that's, I should have included what the letters stand for, but S is for special use permit, Y is permitted by right.
Right.
So large and small, both large and small principal use will remain a special use permit.
Right.
So you still have to get a special... An accessory use, meaning that either a homeowner, or a business owner, or a property owner with a structure with a established use, if they want to put a rooftop or a ground-mounted system, that's, that'll, it'll become a staff-level decision.
Gotcha.
So it's, it's not going to make you say, oh, I'd rather not make a recommendation against it because it's a three instead of a one, like when you guys made recommendations for this?
No, I mean, so that, the buffer yards, which are what we would call the required plantings or construction or landscaping between uses that have conflicting land use intensity designations, those are administered and kind of permitted after the approval, after the fact, so to speak, so kind of like some of the things we were speaking about earlier. Sewer and water and some of your more typical construction projects, that's dealt with after the approval, after the zoning approval. So the LU, LUI designations and the buffer yard requirements, again, are dealt with kind of in progress and kind of after the fact of the zoning approval.
I, I'm thinking we're going to have an increase in the number of people asking for solar...
Yeah, and I, I think it's a good thing too.
Yeah.
There's some pretty significant federal rebates out there.
Right.
Text rebates for these that, again, that's kind of...
Yep.
One among many motivations to get this hopefully established in our ordinance so people, residents can take advantage of those.
Well, anything written you have to read in to the minutes at all? All right, then we will open the public hearing at nine-twelve. Anyone wishing to speak, come on up.
Carl Kita, four fifty-five Bishop Woods Road. I am very much in support of this change. I mean, it, it's long overdue. It's going to, and Jim, your question earlier was a good one. I mean, you've probably seen some of the old solar panels that they would hang on the face of the, of the house, you know, those big black squares, and they just look terrible. You know, a lot of the newer stuff is just phenomenal, and it's so much more efficient, and it's just, I'm full support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doesn't look like there's anyone else wishing to speak, since there's no one else here, so we will close the public hearing at... Did I open it?
Nine-twelve.
Nine-thirteen then. Okay. So, any other comments, questions, commissioners, motions?
Make a motion to approve item six B, as stated in the agenda, with the, any and all specific conditions mentioned by Mr. Powers.
Second that.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote? Steve Hickenin?
Yes.
Andy Farrow?
Yes.
Daphne Cody?
Yes.
Winslow?
Yes.
Jim Johnson's a yes. Okay? Great job, Eric. Appreciate all your help on this. Really good for the township.
Not finished yet, but that's a...
Yep. We'll do windmills next, right?
Solar windows?
Yeah, that too. They'll be coming. All right. Seven unfinished business, none at this time, no correspondence at this time. So ahead to Mrs. Winslow with the township board report.
The township board did have a work session with the business association and their concerns that they wanted us to be aware of, where it's certainly that intersection that we talked about tonight. They also wanted to know if there was anything new in the master plan, which there is not, and they were wondering about roundabout signage, but we cannot put signage in the roundabout, so that was shared. They wondered what was going on with the Forestville project, they'll be able to find that out tonight, and the Hartwood property. So, the township board mat, and probably of most importance, Lowell Larson, Jr., is the captain of the Marquette County Sheriff's Office, and he did provide us with his card. And I don't know, there's one here, but certainly if you want to know his number, if you have any concerns, grab that card. Yeah.
So you call him if there's any issues in the township?
If you, if our board has an issue or something.
Oh, okay, okay.
We did order a new vehicle for the police department, and it is going to be a SUV kind of vehicle. I think it's white.
We ordered an SUV, township did?
We buy the vehicles.
Oh. I didn't know that.
After two years, I think it's two years, we get them back.
So then, and pay for their salary then? So we own the vehicle, and then...
We own the vehicle, we pay for all the equipment in the vehicle, we pay for salary.
So it's just, it's just used for the township? Or they must use it other places besides just township use though?
I, I don't...
Do they keep it at the sheriff's office?
I don't know how that works, but I can say that all police have the ability to respond to anything in the community. So the northern police can respond to the township, they're deputized, that's what I was told. So I think ours are deputized, though they can probably go anywhere there is a crisis.
Yeah, but he, he just mostly does stay in the township when he...
There's two of them.
Two?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Two vehicles or two deputies?
Two deputies.
Okay. And there's some, that's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week?
It is not twenty-four hours a day. They are done, I think, at two AM. I can find that out, and their reports are always in our board packet, so you can see what they've been doing. So take a peek if you have questions.
All right.
He comes to most board meetings.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Uh, any rec committee report, Eric?
Nothing besides that the VNR, M&amp;R TF grant coordinator for the wellhead application, they'll be making a site visit in July, or it is July, or not yet, July. I think July, I forget the date, but they'll be here on a certain date in July, Jason and I think a couple, uh, at least Jason will be meeting, meeting them at the site, and it's only for twenty or so minutes, but site visit, I think that, you think that is a good sign, so. Road committee has not met, we meet next week, and I have nothing else to add under planning and zoning unless there's any specific questions.
You don't have any specific questions? Townsmen's? Any more public comment? I see a public sitting back there. Does you have any comments, sir?
He, he just woke up.
Okay, additional comments by planning commissioners?
I think it was a good meeting, good hearing.
Agreed.
I agree too. I appreciate everything everybody said, and I, and I'm really interested in learning more about it.
Now, do you know how old I am right now?
Yes, surprise.
I just...
Shocked, I thought you were sixty-one.
I just added extra years, Beth. Um, no, thank you, thanks, thanks everyone for all your research and all the stuff, and I look forward to seeing what they have to offer.
Yeah, I, you know, the biggest thing, I, I just wanted to see, get it going and see what's going to happen, you know, it's, it's still not approving what they're doing. It's just give them a chance to see if we can come up with, you know, what they're going to do and if it's going to be...
Well, I thought they were going to just jump up and say, yes, ten percent of these units are going to be affordable housing.
They don't have to.
I thought they were just going to agree with me, right off the bat.
I'm not sure they disagree with you.
I don't think they're the developer for that.
I don't think they have...
I think you need a developer that does affordable housing, which there are, the Red and Mar...
I know, and we got one coming up, so...
We do, so they have to find their own property. This is their property.
That's right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Couple of comments from me about, about this is, uh, you know, I guess I'd kind of like to study that watershed a little bit more, or get more information on that for them, you know, before we have that, before they bring it back, whenever, they have up, up to a year to do this now, right, Eric?
Yep.
Okay, so if we could kind of get some information on that, because I think that's kind of a big thing, and who would be responsible for that water pressure then situation, is that the township, or?
Public Works, Eric Public Works.
It's Lanny. We could ask Lanny to come.
Well, he comes once a year anyway, when he wants money, right? Do you need a...
Lanny?
Yeah, they come here with the projects, right?
Oh, yeah.
We can ask him.
But we could, we could invite him. He is very...
I mean, how do you, how do you fix that? Do they have another, could you put another, like, pump station in there, or you're not going to put another tank somewhere?
This is what Kurt Page used to tell us, because we have terrible water pressure where I live, terrible. It meets the requirement.
If I had fifty PSI out of my well constantly, I'd be thrilled.
Yeah, I know.
Is that what they're saying?
They said ninety-seven, ninety-two.
Well, you don't have, we don't have...
I run twenty to forty.
Right. Yeah, so, you know, I, I know when pressure goes down, the sprinklers don't work. Hey, I, I mean, I know that we don't have our sprinklers.
Oh, yeah.
There's code out there for a reason.
You know, and I, and I think kind of, you know, they're talking about the hundred units, I mean, look how long it took Swadley to get to eighty-four units.
That is true.
You know, and this, this could be, it could all be deputized if you hit a hundred units.
You know, he has a beautiful subdivision behind the condo, and I know what those houses go for.
Yeah. The lots, too.
It is beautiful.
And it's market demand. If the, if the market is all a hundred people came, then I guess we know.
You've already got...
This is what my brother says.
Yeah, no, I, I have no problem with making as much money as they want, I just think the lots are too small. I just think they're too small for the area.
There, there's some that are, you know, bigger, but I don't know, they don't... It, I mean, phonks are small.
No, we approve those, and I had a problem with those too.
Yeah.
Here, you turn my eyes off, then I'm going to turn yours off.
Hey? Anything else? All right, we're adjourned. Nine-twenty-two.
Nine-twenty-two.
Who's making dinner?